Okay, we call this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got no citizens to be heard. Approval of, we got the bills and vouchers.
Will approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we have the minutes from September 20th that we need to approve.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to consideration for amendment to the County Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. Our county attorney Jenny.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for having me today. We're talking about some really interesting stuff this morning to kick off the meeting. Talking about data practices, which just is all the paper and/or electronic files that the county holds. And being a public entity, then we are subject to the Government Data Practices Act, which in essence makes most of what we hold as a government entity open and viewable by the public. And the law is that it starts at the point where everything that the county holds is public, and then within statute it tells us what is not public. So it starts including everything and then it picks out just the portions that are not public. So we're dealing with a bunch of statutes, Minnesota statutes, Chapter 13, and it's kind of an intricate mix of pulling out different information and/or documents from this larger bunch of documents that the county holds. So in conjunction with that chapter, it makes the county responsible for a few things. Makes the county responsible for a policy for data practices for the public, meaning anyone within the public. So we have to have that policy. We also have to have a policy for data practices for an individual. And that would mean, an individual would be someone whom we hold information on. So an example would be in social services, someone that applies for social services, if we had documents that have that person's name on them, that would be the policy that would apply to them. So data to an individual.
Didn't we have this before? Is this something new or?
We did. We have a version from 1990 was the last version that we have. And Brian is going to pass out here, I believe, Darren, we met as a group, myself, Darren, Mr. Berg, Rhonda, Kathy McKay was there, Mark Sloan as well. We met as a group to try to figure out how best to update these policies. And Darren took the task of updating the policies. So this first one that Mr. Berg handed out is our data practice policy for members of the public. That's what's proposed. And this next one that I'll hand out is the second one that we talked about for data subjects. So you can see, they look very similar, but they are going to be for two different portions of the public segment. One will be for general members of the public that could be pressed, that is making a request for a certain document. And then the data subject policy would be for actual persons who are the data subjects and we hold data on them. But you can see that they're very similar. So Darren updated these policies. And then in addition, we are also required, the third thing we are required to have is what's called data inventories. And so these are inventories or spreadsheets, and I'll pass them out, you can see them closer. One for every group of data that we hold. And it makes sense within the department, if you have just one for your department. In the case of social services, they have one or more than one in every unit. So the sample that I'll pass out is for their adult mental health civil commitment unit.
Looks like a lot of lawyers though.
I told you we were going to start out with a lot of fun this morning. And so this is an example for adult mental health. You can see, it's every document that the adult mental health unit would have, that if someone came in and asked for it, they may or may not have access to it. Private would mean you'd only have access to it if your name was on that document or if that document was about you. Confidential, of course, would mean no one would have access to that document. So along with Darren doing the two policies that were handed out, I met with the management committee last Thursday and passed out to them every department's old inventory from 1990 and asked that they update them. And so I've gotten probably 60, 75% of those back and I'm working with the individual departments. This one's completed. Social Services has all theirs completed. And you see, we put them in a nice spreadsheet form. We put the name of the document, kind of a description of the document, the classification and the legal authority for making it either private or confidential. Then by law, we have to name our designee in the second to the last column. And then the final column is employee work access. So that by law, we have to list everyone in the county that would have access to that document. So because our policy was from 1990, it was felt that it was the right time to update all these policies and inventories. In addition, we have to name what's called a responsible authority. And that person is kind of the gatekeeper. If there's a public data request, that request will come through the responsible authority. You can see on this inventory, Rhonda Porter is listed as the responsible authority. That's because by statute, the director of social services has to be the responsible authority for social service data. In addition, elected officials have to be the responsible authority for their department. So for example, the attorney's inventory would list Brian Melton as the responsible authority. And the sheriff's department inventory will list Bill Berquist as the responsible authority. And then every other department, by statute, the default responsible authority is the county administrator. So we've put Mr. Berg's name on all the other inventories. And you can see in the policy, it's the back of the third to the last page, it lists Brian Berg, responsible authority, Bill Berquist, responsible authority, Brian Melton, responsible authority, and Rhonda Porter, responsible authority. And what happens is when those folks would get a request, they then would get that request to the appropriate designee. And each designee is different depending on which department we're talking about. So the designees are also listed there later on in the page. And in the middle of the page, data practices compliance official, that's something else by statute that we have to have. And we talked about listing myself there. That person is really, if there's any questions or disputes on what information can be released to the public or a particular person, then you call the data compliance officer and work with that person to determine what information should be released. So those are what we're proposing. Again, we had a version from 1990. It didn't look quite as pretty as this. It had all the same guts to it, but it was outdated in the sense that some of the folks listed don't work here anymore. But, you know, again, the guts of it were still valid. And the inventories, now we've updated those and they look, they're more current, they're in a better format. We've gotten rid of any documents that no longer exist or added documents that might be new since that time. So we're asking this board today to approve the new data practice policies, both for members of the public and for the data subjects. And then also approve the inventories as they are finished by each department to replace the old ones. And then the third thing would be to appoint or reappoint the individuals that I talked about, the responsible authority, the designees, and the data compliance officials. And then this policy will get, or the policies and the inventories will get posted on our website. Mark Sloan is going to work on that end of it. And then they will continually be kept updated from here on out. Myself and Darren will work on making sure that they keep updated and so we're not in a place where we're amending it this many years later. We keep them updated and good for the public to check out online if they're interested.
So you update, you need approval each time you update?
We shouldn't need approval every time we update. But when we're making an overhaul like this, actually changing the document and the inventories, I think it's wise to have approval from the board, also just informational and for the public to know. And then I suppose that could be part of the motion if someone wanted to make that motion, that could be continually updated for, you know, changes in documents and/or changes in staff.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
On the responsible authority here in this one that you have here, you're showing Rhonda Porter and then underneath it you have Clay County Administrator.
Okay.
I, it appears to me she's taken over Brian's job.
Yeah, no, that's a typo, I'm sorry. That was sent out.
Why are you worried?
I wasn't worried. That was taken from a template that they, what was interesting was, many of the departments were able to take the old forms and simply update them. And also some templates that we had from other Minnesota counties. Social Services was not able to do that because their documents were, they did not match with what we had pre-existing. And so their job in this whole amendment and redoing their inventories was a lot, a lot more difficult. And so I sent them a template and that's, that accounts for that typo because the template had Brian Berg's name on it. And they must have replaced Rhonda Porter's name but not the title. So we'll make sure we do that. Thank you for catching me.
Yeah, and I just want to make the comment here that I, you know, I think anytime that we're handed policy changes that reflect multiple pages like this, I like to have a little bit of time to consume the information. I would, you know, I was kind of hoping there, that we wouldn't have had a motion to approve this. It doesn't seem to me that this is something that needs to be done today. Is it, I mean, is it that critical that?
Well, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible. We have pending data practice requests that we'd like to fill. It's my, it is my fault we didn't have that sooner. I should have had that out to the board, but we, we really did work on this rather quickly.
Yeah, I get that. I just, I'm voting on policies that I haven't read.
Sure.
And I'm not really keen on doing that.
If you're more comfortable, certainly we'll take it up at another time. It's not going to be fatal to anything if we.
Oh, we do have a motion on, in a second, so we'll vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Thank you. And I can tell you that the policy is what it, it's not a change in policy, it's a change in form, and it's also then a change in individuals that are listed, so. Thank you very much. Do you ever have any questions on?
Didn't look like fun, but good work.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Campbell's point is well taken. Matter of policy should be advanced. And to defend Jenny just a little bit on this as well, it's because of a pending request that she has pushed this kind of.
And I wasn't, my statement wasn't being upset with it all, I'm just, it's just.
No, it's well taken.
It's just process that I think should follow.
That's exactly right.
It makes complete sense and yes, we'll definitely do that going forward. This one was a little bit unique, so thank you very much.
Okay, well, next we got Kirk. Phil, position for a solid waste truck driver.
Looks like you weathered the vacation fairly well. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We missed you. I'd like to come before the board today to ask permission to replace a truck driver. I'm very sorry to report that our truck driver is leaving after a year. He's a very, very good truck driver, very, very dependable, very safe, excellent, excellent driver. He's had some personal issues and he's decided that he's going to leave. The position that we're replacing is a grade 11, step 1, which is about $16.95 a year. We have a budget.
An hour, yeah.
An hour, yeah, I'm sorry.
The pay isn't good, but it's not.
No, it's the benefits, all that really matters. At any rate, that's the hourly rate that we have. And we, the truck driver is used primarily to haul garbage from the transfer station to be processed. And we also use the truck driver to haul the shade to be treated. So with that, I ask permission to fill this position.
I approve. Second. Any further discussion? Jenny?
I just have a question in regards to what we're seeing within the metro for truck drivers. That step seems to be significantly lower than what I've seen other jobs advertised. And I know that's been, been a question in other jobs. Are you expecting to get many applications?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that's a concern of mine. This position is $16.95. The city of Moorhead is $22 for the same position. So we were really, really fortunate at the last, for the last time we filled the position. I might point out, and I think I mentioned it in my overview that I provided for y'all, we're going to wait until the 18th. We're going to try and keep it open until the 18th because of beet harvest and hunting season. I think it's going to be extremely difficult to fill the position. But I think your comments as far as a fair salary is well taken. I know Brian and I wrestle with that on a regular basis, so I'm hopeful that we can get a qualified person.
Got a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'll see you later.
Yep. With that, we'll go to Mr. Berg on consideration for amendment to the architect contract with Klein-McCarthy to include the law enforcement center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'd like to hand out a couple of things here for a little discussion first. Okay. The first item that I handed out to you is just a spreadsheet that Timmy put together in our finalization of the, well, he's kept it up date as we moved through the acquisition of homes to the north. And you can just, it's just a visual of the fact that we have closed on all of the homes that we expected to. I know, I think I reported that we were going to go to the last closing last Friday, which we did. We've closed on all of the 23 homes. And the final demolition will occur. We've had the inspections for asbestos. There's a little bit of abatement in each of the three houses that are left that are occurring this week. So the excavators are now taking down the sheriff's garage and the old exercise area. If you drove by there this morning, the old exercise area is gone now and the garage will probably go today. And then they'll go back over and finish up the rest of the houses that will be left. So this is just a document that, like I said, Tim had prepared and kept track of going through. The, and this is probably for committee discussion, but I have a note on this sheet. And it's been brought to my attention, I'm not sure who brought it to me first. It's a very good suggestion that we may want to talk about the, maybe purchasing an option if that's possible on those last two properties. I don't know that we need them, I don't know if the county will want them, but maybe discussions for committee later on if you ever want to secure that. Wouldn't be a bad idea, as you can see, they're not high value homes, so. But I just wanted to pass that out to you and entertain that thought if you'd ever want to proceed.
What was that term you used regarding those two properties?
An option on it. And that's where, well, what you would do is strike up a deal that you would have the right of first refusal. In other words, if they want to sell their home at any time, they would have to come to you first to do that. And it would cost you some dollars in order to buy that option.
Thank you.
So that's kind of the basic idea. Jenny's saying our legal wisdom over there is saying, yep.
That's for us.
Okay. Well, what I am here today before you though is to talk about, what we had done is you folks had selected Klein-McCarthy architects to design the jail and, or the new correctional facility, which they have done. In fact, the bids are out this week. They will finalize and complete the tabulations of those. And then that will be brought for your consideration October 25th. So that is really moving along. Recently, their attention for design and schematic design and things have been shifted to the law enforcement center. And if you remember, I know you do, but that this is one project. And they have gone down the road to start the schematic on the law enforcement center. In fact, a lot of energy has been put in that. A lot of changes have occurred. So what you have before you is just a document, it's the AIA document G802-2007. That's the first one. It does say draft on it, and he is sending me up a formal one with the signature on it. But what it is, is just amending the contract that you signed with Klein-McCarthy, adding the law enforcement center to it. And if you'll see down there, there's a little break on the fee on this one. The additional service compensation shall be 6.4% of the guaranteed maximum price. And from my standpoint, and I would certainly welcome comments from the committee members here, Klein-McCarthy have been great to work with. We, I think we're on a real professional path with them for the design. And I would certainly recommend that you approve amending the document to add the law enforcement center. This has been reviewed by Jenny and our legal counsel and approves of it as well. In format, I guess you're not recommending it.
The one thing I've been noticing as I go through these documents, I see you refer to the Clay County Jail. Do we want to change that to Clay County Correctional Facility or do we want to keep it jail?
Yeah, well, I guess, Mr. Chair, when we started down the road and presented the documents, we said jail. We could certainly change that because that's the terminology we're using. In fact, I think, I think we could just do that.
Well, I see in some places how we've got to change it from Clay County Jail and Law Enforcement Center, as long as we're changing that. I mean, I don't know if it's a big thing or not, you know, other than.
Be consistent, we've been talking correctional facility.
Correction facility all the time, and now we're changing it, as long as we're changing it now, I don't know.
Be a good time change.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is this is essentially kind of an add-on to the original document. If you recall, I mean, that was a many, many page document for the correctional facility. And I would guess that the reason that this says jail is because that original document says jail, so.
And that is fine. I mean, I realize what we're building. I mean, it's just, it's not going to change it, but it's.
We would need to change both, so. I'm sure Klein-McCarthy could do that if that's our request.
Yeah, we can work on that and deal with them on it and bring it back. Not bring this back, but just bring back the correction and the word each other, if Jenny can be okay with the word each on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
My concern is if we had issues with data practices documents coming before us without getting them in our board packet, something in the tune of $13 million should have come in the board packet before. I've maintained a stance that I felt that it was important to hear the wishes of the people before we commit to an enormous amount of additional dollars. And while I understand that we've moved forward on considerable design work, that vote is not very far away, and I think it's important because of the concerns that I've heard from constituents that, well, yes or no, we have no say in additional funds. This would allow citizens the opportunity to know that we're taking their concerns into effect. I've asked questions, what happens if that measure were to fail? What happens with the additional $13 to $15 million project? And it's been said that, well, then we'll have to do a break check, we'll have to reanalyze. And committing to this doesn't allow that.
Well, my response to that is, you know, we've talked about this and the board is committed to doing both projects. And, you know, it's, if we didn't take some sort of position, it's real easy to, for somebody to say no to a jail or a correctional facility. The fact of the matter is, is the way that thing is designed, and when you look at the whole scope of things, including if we did just the correctional facility and not the law enforcement center, the cost to the public would be so close to building new just because of the facility that we'd have to remodel. And the fact of the matter is, is part of the current plan calls for the elimination of that site to make the new facility fit. I agree that I wish that, you know, we, could we have had a vote on the entire thing by the public? Sure. But the fact of the matter is, is what if they vote no on that? And then you have the Minnesota Department of Corrections saying, okay, we're not going to license you anymore.
I understand what's at stake. I've been in a lot of meetings as well, but you need to understand that there are concerns within the community that says that they're voting for non-negotiable dollar amounts. And I understand that the building was moved north. I understand that that calls for the law enforcement center to be changed and added. And I understand that we bought out homes. What I'm saying is that I would like to wait until after the election to proceed on this document personally.
I think, I think Klein-McCarthy and for that matter, construction engineers has done an incredible job. And they've worked both with our sheriff's department and our Moorehead Police Department to come up with the most cost efficient building that we could possibly do when it comes to the law enforcement center. the law enforcement center. And that we need it. And I don't know that, going back to the drawing board, if this goes, if this is a no vote, going back to the drawing board, I don't know how we can make changes to that now with where we've gone on this. And so I, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a, this is a good deal for us. And they've lowered the compensation to six point four percent. I move that we go ahead with the professional service agreement.
I'll second the motion. I agree. I don't think there's any, you know, any going back on this at this point. I think we've made the decision that it's one project, and I think we have to look at it from that perspective. And I think the public understands that. I'm confident people have gotten the message that how critical it is for us to approve this half-cent sales tax, so.
I do want to follow up on that too, you know. And, you know, maybe, you know, in Commissioner Mojo's area there or who she's hearing from, that could be the case. But I have yet to be at a presentation or talk to anybody who has major issues with what we're doing. What I hear time and time again is it's long overdue. What's taken so long to do it? And now, now we're getting there and we're, you know, we're going full steam ahead. And I think, I think the people are going to support this. I really do. I think they do support it.
Mr. Chair, if I may address the timing of this. The architects have been working on the schematic and same with the construction engineers on the cost for the law enforcement center. And there is some additional charges. And they have said that it's tough for them now to do anything further until we get this under contract and go forward with it. So they were making the request that we kind of tie something down. So that's why I prompted for you. The timing, I don't know if it was the best to bring it in today, but they've been, they've said they need to move forward with the design if they're going to meet the timelines for our winter bid process. So they've been pushing on this a little bit, so.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the authorization, excuse, amendment for the architect contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I make a comment as well? My dissent is not in non-support of the project. I've said along that I support the project. I'm questioning the timing of the proposal today.
And, Mr. Chair, in addition to this, they do run hand-in-hand. I passed you out two documents. You also have before you, construction engineers' proposal for a change order, which would just do the same thing as what you did with the amending on the contract for the architectural services. And that's for construction engineers. And if you remember right on, construction engineers' proposal, that's a construction management firm that you hired to do this, you are only obligated for the pre-construction fee of point two five percent, which is very minimal on the project. And that's to establish your price to see if you want to move forward. So that's how their contract reads. So this would be the same way. Their fee is three percent again for the law enforcement center. And their pre-construction fee going up to the guaranteed maximum price is two, point two five percent. So if you remember right back, when we signed the contract with construction engineers, that what you were obligating yourself was for a point two five percent. In other words, it was around $65,000. And that's for the work that they would do up until they lay a figure in front of you to say that we will build a jail for this. And that's when you say, okay, we'll go ahead with you folks to the extra three percent fee. And that's the same with the law enforcement center. With this change order, you are asking, you're hiring them for the law enforcement center. And it's not really hiring them, you're adding it to it because it's a change order. And what you're obligating is a point two five percent of the valuation. And as the architect said, it was a $13.7 million law enforcement figure. And that's what you would be obligating to today in adding that change order to construction engineers.
Okay.
So I'd ask for an approval to add construction engineers on as well. They've been, they've been absolutely great to work with.
Is there a second motion? You're looking for a...
I'm looking for a second motion for them, yes.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to add this to the construction engineering firm. Any further discussion? Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any further on that?
Nothing further on that for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next one. Approved authorization to advertise a vacant position for the Buffalo River watershed board. As you can see in our packet, that we received the resignation from one of the Buffalo River members. So we need to...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve as listed here.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
This is a county-wide, right?
Yes, it is.
We're looking for...
Well, personally, I'd be in favor of opening up our positions that we have on the Buffalo Red, but because I don't think they're serving the best interests of the people in the county, but, at least in some cases. But I'll, I guess that will come again this summer, so we'll deal with that then, so.
How are they not serving the needs of the people?
They backed out of the diversion board, which is not in the best interest, at least in my estimation, and serving the people of the county to not have a place at the board. It's not, not, when most of the money to the Buffalo Red comes from the people of Morehead, it's, they're not serving their interests, so.
But if all of the appointed members from Clay County would have voted for that joint powers, they still wouldn't have voted to be in it because the majority of that came from Wilkin or Otter Tail or whatever.
That may or may not be true. I mean, that, you know, some of those votes maybe would have changed also if the people that represent us would have voted accordingly, so. Maybe, maybe not.
It may be in our interest then, there's an advisory board of elected officials and citizens that advise that board. And from all the meetings that I've been at, there's not been one person sitting there saying, you should have been at the joint powers.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No. I, I want to see who we get for who's interested in serving. I guess that's, the first thing we've got to do is have people who are going to step up.
Yeah, I guess that's the whole purpose of advertising, so. We've got a motion to advertise for the visit of one position in the Red River watershed board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Looks like you're going to just stay up here for the next one, too?
Yes, I hope to.
Okay, we have to reappoint county assessor, or the next thing on the agenda is the reappointment of county assessor Nancy Gunderson to a new four-year term of office.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, the letter you have before you, or the memo, I should say, from we visited about that, and she kind of sent this to me. And I said, well, this is a good memo, just to send directly to the board. The county assessor, along with the veteran service officer, and I'm trying to think if there's any other, oh, highway engineer, they work on four-year appointments by the county board. And there's a procedure in there. If you're not satisfied with their performance, you have to notify them within a certain amount of time. Of course, that time has lapsed because, in my view, you folks have asked me to supervise the department heads, and the assessor would be one of them. She has been receiving annual evaluations and frankly, almost weekly communication I have with her. I think she's done a tremendous job. She's accurate, she's firm, she's timely, she's thorough. She just does a very, very good job as your county assessor. And I would highly recommend that you folks reappoint her as your county assessor.
Mr. Chair, move to reappoint Nancy Gunderson?
Second. I guess I would really have to agree with your comments there, Brian. It's just, she's done a tremendous job and she's great to work with and always comes forward with the, if I go down with the situation, she always comes, gives me the good answers and makes my decisions on it. And I'm glad that she's on our staff. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're off for another four years. Nancy, thank you so much for your...
Thanks, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, we'll go on committee reports. We're going to start with Kevin.
Okay. Last week, we had, last Wednesday, we had a diversion meeting, which went into, sole purpose was to go into executive session to discuss pending legal issues. And that is as much as I can say on that. And then on the sixth, we had a Clay County Joint Powers Board meeting. And we talked about, and we had a CERT presentation from Brian Green, I think. Jenny will probably comment some more on that if she chairs that group. I'll let her do the rest of that. That's, that's all I had last week.
Okay. Matt, did you have something that you needed to present, or?
He's going to sit in with us at the juvenile meeting this afternoon.
Oh, very good. Nice to see you. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I also had the joint powers meeting. As Kevin talked about, we did have a presentation about the CERT, which is a citizen's response with traumatic events, natural disasters, et cetera. There was some discussion on the importance of possibly having something for zones of cities where there are individuals who, in, in time of crisis, would then lead response. That was just a discussion level or a committee-level discussion. Clearly, there will be something later on that we'll need to discuss. We did move it to an item of interest possibly for the governmental, intergovernmental retreat in January. And we also just discussed future plans for that meeting plant, meeting planning session. We did hear from the mayor of Dilworth in regards to their budget. There will be a small increase in their budget this year, only due to the fact that they will be hiring an additional police officer. It's the only addition in their budget. That concludes my report.
I just had the diversion authority close session meeting last week. That was it for me.
Wayne?
On Tuesday, October 4th, Morgue Planet Commission, General Business, passed variance for Clay County regarding the side yard building setback at Ninth Street and Eighth Avenue North, having to do with the law enforcement facility. Passed on to the city council, request for rezoning by Mr. Bjornstedt, first initial D, at 3401 Eighth Street South. Again, passed on to the city council, a preliminary plat at Evergreen Meadows, and also rezoning. This was a request by George Johansson. Thursday, October 2nd, local advisory council of children's mental health, general business, a report on the parent leadership summit that had been held in Minneapolis in August, presentation by Amy Amundson of the Clay County Social Services Department. Amy went over the budget for children's mental health services, and Amy did an excellent job and had all her figures documented. We discussed the 2016, 2017 work plan, agency reports from Clay County Social Services, Clay County Collaborative, Clay County Juvenile Center, Summit Guidance, Mobile Crisis Unit, and the last one was from Clay County Public Health. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Before I left on the occasion, I did go Highway Tracking, but had a Highway Tracking meeting, but I'm sure that was discussed last week. Friday, I went to Partnership for Health in Barnesville. We had a lecture of officers and also we had a big discussion, well, a lot of discussion was on, on the dental program, you know. The funding for the dental program is going to run out year 2020. And so it's sort of related like the SRO officers, you get these fundings, and then after a while, the funding runs out, and then now you're, what do you do with the SRO officer? Do you make him part of your staff or not? Same thing with this dental program, you know. In our schools right now, they, when the kids come to school, they have to have their shot records and all that updated, you know. And they have eye, ear, and vision tests in the school. There's no dental really going on, you know. So that's, they're really pushing the dental part of this and trying to get that going. So that was a big discussion that we had on that. A little bit discussion on e-cigarettes and stuff like that, smoking, how, how much they're advertising for the flavor of it, you know. They're trying to get something now that the e-cigarettes can't have any flavor in them, you know. It just has to be the one, the one thing. So that's something they're working on, too. That was it for me then. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine goes back, I was not, I did, was not in attendance at the last board meeting either for an update. And I did send an email out in regards to that. I was involved in that P3 process of a recommendation, recommending committee for the, for the P3 project. And that involved an awful lot of time. We had to review all of that information that was sent out. And we went through and scored on paper. And then we had conducted two days of interviews with the different consortiums last week. And one of them was on Tuesday, it started at eight o'clock in the morning. And the other was Thursday. So that consumed a lot of time, but I think it's really an important project. And I thank you for allowing me the time to do that. I guess you had asked me to serve on that on behalf of Clay County, so. But that's why I was gone. So I'm just going to run through some real quick meetings here. Met with Kirk, referenced the solid waste fees, and I'm sure that was reported on last week. Highway Tracking meeting, attended the data practice meeting. We've had a couple of those and I think made really, really good progress, Jenny and Darren there, and Mark Sloan, who had put together the first book on it. So had done some really good work. Did have some personnel evaluations, Kirk to be one of them. Kirk Cannon, veteran service officer, I think is doing a, doing a fine job. Had a conference call on the diversion legislative update to see what that's doing on the federal level. And talked already about the P3. Attended two of the last home closings last Friday. So I'd already reported on that a little bit earlier, so that's really a relief. The close session, the diversion board meeting, also attended that. We had an advisory, diversion advisory meeting last Friday morning. There's lots to discuss there in regards to the action going forward. I met with Darren and Kathy yesterday about some personnel requests coming forward and structuring and looking at that. Met with Darren on Lake 15 issue that Commissioner Ingersoll contacted me about. And we're putting some time into that to make a good response because it's a complicated matter out there. And we'll be dealing with that. Met with Steve a couple times in the last week or so in regards to the juvenile space issue. We're meeting this morning after board meeting on that. Boy, he's, they're really full and busting at the seams over there. And that's why Matt's here as well, because then they get involved in the transport of the juveniles that need to go. So we'll be talking more about that, too. And then, yes, I did attend the, and Commissioner Ingersoll already responded on that or reported on that. And that's the variance on the new correctional facility. We requested a thirteen-and-a-half-foot setback rather than the normal 15 from Ninth Street. And the planning and zoning, the city planning and zoning, had the authority to approve that rather than referring that to the, to the city council. And they did approve that. So good to go on that. I think that was last Tuesday night, if I'm mistaken. So with that, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, a couple more comments. First off, I want to comment about Brian as our administrator and our county staff that worked on these buyouts. Early on in this, we projected, or we put together a projection of $3 million to buy out these properties. And the final results are in, and the final number was three million, one, three, or That, that's an incredible accomplishment to get that close to, to... That's an incredible accomplishment to get that close to the total cost, and this guy here and the staff, Tim Magnuson and Jenny from the attorney's office, to all the work that's been done to get that done, that's on budget. And that's really good. If the rest of this project comes through, that's a great deal. And I do want to also mention that Brian has taken an awful lot of time going around on this project to helping to inform the people of this project. I think we've got another deal leaving this afternoon, not we, at one of the universities we're going to go over to, and he's come with me on several radio deals. And I do want to point out, you know, we had this discussion about if this referendum fails, but I think more importantly, we need to have the people understand that, you know, if there's this feeling that the county board just took this decision without the input of the people, I want to make it clear that we had a large, very large construction committee that was made up of public and private and business people that were involved, that made the recommendations to this board to do everything that we're doing. So we've done what we can from that standpoint, and we have, there had to be tough decisions made. And I know your issue is more about, you know, waiting to see if it passes, but I, you know, my message has been to the public, sometimes when they see a yes or a no option on a referendum, a no means it won't be done. But in this particular case, that decision has been done. That decision's been made. We've got way too much investment. We just talked about three million dollars of it right now with what we're doing across the street. So, but I think the public needs to know that these decisions, we had input from a variety of people, from members of business associations, to the public, to township officers, all of them were involved with this process. And I think we need to just be clear that we did have an awful lot of input. And my concern now is that the people understand what that referendum question means, and I think that's what we're working on right now. You know, I think if you ask Commissioner Mojo, I think what she thinks of a yes or a no vote on it, you know, I think she probably, I can't speak for her, but I would think that she's going to be supporting the referendum question, but, so, anyway, I wanted to just make that comment, that we've had a significant amount of public input on this.
Well, I think, you know, what you're getting out on the papers and stuff like that in the meetings you're going to is really going to help, and you're doing a good job on that, you know, and as far as Brian doing a good job, we sort of figured that already.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments? We're adjourned.